Now we've started.
Oh, recording.
Well, Amanda and Cecilia are in the Karen LaRocca box.
Oh, I only see them. Oh, my gosh, now Karen's in the picture. Very nice. Well, without further ado, we can actually start our meeting. And we will all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, since we have the recording and we're all in, all of the trustees are present, need not list those names for the attendance. Joining us is Dennis Newberger, President of the Friends of the Austin Public Library, and Molly Robbins and Karen LaRocca. And those, do you know of any other guests, Karen, or public members that might be joining us?
Jonathan Marshall may be joining us.
Okay.
And Leslie Allen wasn't sure if she would be able to, but said she would if she could.
Okay.
There's a foundation meeting tomorrow, right, at three or two?
Yes, three.
It's a three. Yes, I have it on my calendar.
Very good. So we will move on to the first item, and that is to accept the minutes from our previous meeting. And if I remember, everybody was present for that meeting. So what we can do is give everyone a second or two if they have any questions. I wanted to review those minutes, and then we will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the August 12th meeting and proceed to a vote. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. And Amanda and, you know, I don't see Kathy. Is she with us?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, and we have a second, so we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of accepting a minute for August 16, 2021, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And Dennis, I'd like to, but I can't count you. And that passes six zero. And at this time, Dennis, I would like to, before I ask you to talk to us about the Friends, welcome, John Marshall has joined us. And Dennis, I'll turn the floor over to you to talk about the Friends at this time.
Okay. Some things have been happening. The financial update, our checking is now down to $9,732 with $7,700 in reserve and savings. We did pay during the summer $18,553 for various improvements and different programs, and $600 for the mom and infant program. Update on events for the fall. We've started to accept donations. One truck pulled up with 30 boxes of books with the team and with the help of Stephen. We're able to get everything sorted. And we're working now with James Tripaso to have one book sale, maybe now moving it to October instead of November. The Etsy fair is still on for the 20th. And we definitely would like to see if there's something that can be done to highlight the Friends, because it helps us really to increase donations and membership, so we can start getting that checking balance up some more. On the homebound and organization activity, working with Karen and Diana, it has now started as of 9/16. One thing that we're going to look into is, this was with the priests and brothers that I used to deliver to your sisters across the road. And we're going to see about, you know, contacting them. But they seem to be in complete lockdown. There were some papers I needed from them, and I couldn't go pick them up. Everything has to be through the mail. So something is going on there. But hopefully, we can get them involved, especially with the programs that can be viewed on the television. Flow and Sunshine is still on hold. And right now, I have a meeting. They contacted me from the American Legion, so they may need some books, DVDs, with the holidays coming up. Nothing is really going on with Cedar Manor. And now with the homebound, that, I met with Karen and Diana, that is not part of the Friends. So I filled out an application to be, so that I can be able to do it under the volunteer program for the library. But everything else will stay the same. Coin Drop is going, we're still giving money for that. And we're just looking forward to hoping that, you know, things start to return to normal. Are there any questions?
Dennis, I want to thank you again for all the hard work you volunteers do. I was wondering, maybe Karen or Molly, do you know, has ever been a bookmark for the Friends? Like, we have bookmarks for so many other events, or perhaps that could be another source of communication to people about the Friends. Something you think about?
I don't think we've ever done a bookmark in the past. But Dennis, we could talk about that on Wednesday.
Okay. I'll be there Wednesday.
Also, Dennis, are we able to renew our membership electronically?
What, membership of what? The Friends?
With the Friends, yeah.
Check into that. I don't think so, but let me double check, and I'll get back to you.
Right, because if you made it so that we could do it electronically, I'm sure it would be a lot easier for people to join the Friends, because a lot of people just don't write checks anymore and put them in the mail.
I know.
Right?
Beginning to feel like a dinosaur.
Yeah, so if you, you know, if you could prepare that, I bet you the library could help put together an eBlast with like a link, so that people could join the Friends and donate.
Okay, so very good suggestion. I will check into and get back to everyone.
Karen, we could help with that, right?
Um, we, we can, to a certain extent. We can put whatever information needs to go on the website.
Right. They have to set up the electronic
Correct.
money, yes.
And if it's appropriate, perhaps we can publicize a request for a volunteer to join the Friends to help them establish.
Yeah, a digital presence, yeah.
So they become self-sufficient in that respect.
Right, because if there was a standing, like, box in the, I think, does Mallory use Constant Contact?
Yes.
Okay, so if the Friends had like a standing box in the Constant Contact, and there was a link that people could join and donate, then they would have a digital presence with the rest of the library programs.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll check with the team, and then I'll be there Wednesday, and at least we'll see if we can get rolling.
Great.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Alice. Thanks, Dennis. And we can move on to Mr. Jonathan Marshall, who's been very quiet and always attentive, and appreciate your presence. Anything you'd like to share with us, any updates?
Well, I think the, I guess probably the biggest one is the SLA, which I see is that WLS is doing and has sent out, and hope that will be just, you know, discussed and considered tonight by the board, because we're hoping to get those back by October 1, very shortly. So that's probably the key. The other idea is the trustee handbook book club. That is the event that Jerry Nichols and Rebecca Smith Aldridge are going to be holding on Zoom, where they're going to go through the handbook for library trustees of New York State. You know, I think, does everyone have the green book?
Yes.
You don't know where it is. I know I have, oh, Matt, you're such a suck.
See, it's, it's always close at hand.
Oh, you two are like library intelligentsia. It's awesome.
And they're going to have, so the dates you may certainly want to look at is October 19 for 5 to 6, and on Zoom, and that will be, the discussion there will be, they're literally going through some of the chapters. That would be duties and responsibilities. And on November 16, there's a library board meetings will be discussed. And then on December 14, personnel. Now, I don't know if Karen, I don't know if you've, have you received the, have you received invites to that, both for Karen, but also more importantly, for the Board of Trustee members?
No. I'm not sure, Jonathan. I have to look back.
Okay, okay. I can, any questions, I'm happy to get that out to you again.
Jonathan, I applaud that you're doing that. Many, many years ago, the School Boards Association did that, where they actually offered a whole bunch of workshops. And I think it is great that you're doing it virtually. And because I cannot put my hands on my handbook, I assume there is a digital version that maybe could be forwarded to all of us from some, Kathy Byrne, maybe?
Again.
What did you say?
I said again.
We, we will send it to you, Alice.
Yeah, I mean, do they even give us printed versions anymore?
We did get some, yes.
You got some, and then there's, there's, there's both online, there's a PDF.
So is, do you still have copies, Karen?
I think we have some more copies.
We still have whatever she wants.
Yeah.
Okay, the copy, I will get you a copy. If Karen doesn't have a copy, Alice, we will get you a copy.
I am blushing, Jonathan.
Karen, let me know if you need some extra copies. I am happy.
I will, Jonathan, thank you.
My pleasure.
And I'll keep it handy in my, in my folder.
Excellent. By your bedside.
Yeah, of course.
The office is in my daughter's bedroom, so.
And that's, and then the, I think that, that's basically, that was really the two main things that I was, I was looking at. And I think there were, let's see, one other, no, that's, there, there is a new library director at, at Warner Library. I don't know. Jessica, she just joined, started a couple, about a week ago or so, so.
Which town is that?
The Warner Library for
Terrytown.
For Terrytown Sleepy Hollow. So she is, she is replacing for Maureen. So terrific, that's, that's it. And any questions that anybody has, please let me know.
Very good. Thanks again. So Karen, if perhaps you're ready, we'll move on to the Director's Report and the Personnel Report.
I'm ready. Just go over, I'll just go over some highlights of my report. We're still wrapping up the Boiler Project. There is one last thing that needs to happen before we can sign off on it and pay the final bills, and we're hopeful that that will get done this week or next. Molly's working with the engineers who are helping us with our retaining wall situation, and she's also working on securing a new surveying company. We have a, an upcoming building committee meeting. Molly, did we set that date for sure?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be, we'll be going over those, well, we'll be, we'll be going over the retaining wall issue. The engineers will be there.
The Buildings and Grounds Committee again, remind us.
Cecilia, Amanda, Matt, is that it?
Yeah, yes.
Ed Braddock will also be joining us at our building committee meeting to advise us on our H-Track issues and projects going forward. Included in the board packet is a proposal for industrial appraisal. I made a typo in my report. This is not for, we're not doing this for insurance purposes, but for the audit valuation. So, but this is something that we need to do. We had, we had it done a number of years ago, and then every year, they update it based on, you know, inflation rates and depreciation and that kind of thing. But they need, we, we would really like them to come back in the building and do it again from scratch. Migration to our new technology is going really, really well. I'm very proud of all of our staff here who have been adapting and adopting and extraordinarily patient and helping each other. It's a huge process. When we think back on it, I can't even believe that we got this far, but it's, but it's good. Big thank you to Allison Robbins, who's overseeing the whole thing. Without her, I wouldn't be able to do it. And I'm very pleased that WLS Board of Trustees and the PLDA were able to work through the process of adopting a new finance model and coming up with a new SLA. I think that this is really going to be beneficial to our library in particular. And I'm hoping that the board approves the SLA at tonight's meeting. The, the way that it's structured now, we will be paying for our portion of the ILS costs, which is exactly what we would like to be doing. And, and I'm very, I'm very happy that we're in this place. Moving staff towards MS365 as part of our technology migration. We're hoping to have everybody up and running sometime in the winter of 2022. We're migrating our email too, so that'll be interesting and fun. We're taking it very slowly, because it's a huge transition. And we're fortunate that we have training from Microsoft trainers who will be working with us starting in October and then through February to train us on a number of different things.
Molly, stop you there for a second. You mentioned your board will also be using this as an email.
Yes.
Is there a training that you have to do for us?
You can come to our training.
Oh, okay.
So I'll make sure that I have Allison add you to that. The trains will also be recorded, so if you're, if you're not able to attend the actual training session, then you can, then you can watch it later on.
And really be able to be functional in your new system.
I would say so. Yeah. I mean, it's pretty intuitive in that I, I'm able to get into it and use it sort of now, the email portion of it. But there are some things that I sort of struggle with. So yeah, I would say the trainings are important.
So we'll leave our old email that we have kept?
We'll have it for a period of time, but then eventually we'll be going off of it. And just so that you know, we learned the other day, WLS is moving in this direction. They're moving to get libraries onto their own email domains and platforms. They're moving towards MS365. So regardless of what we end up, ended up doing one way or the other, we would still have to do some sort of transition. I'm just making myself a note, sign up trustees for MS365 training. You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yes, there's a lot else. Allison has submitted our ECF funding application. This is for the additional hotspots and Chromebooks to lend out. This is through the federal funding, and we're going through E-Rate for this. We have on to COVID-related stuff. We have reinstituted our masking requirement for the building. For the most part, everybody is either thankful or complicit. There are a few others. But we haven't had any real terrible incidents, and we're hoping that that continues. And hopefully, this is a temporary situation, and we'll be able to move back in the other direction at some point. As far as the personnel librarian two goes, we are almost at the point where I'm hopeful that I can announce to you that we'll be appointing somebody soon. We're at the final part of the civil service process, and it's been a long process, but it's always a long process when it comes to these kinds of positions. Our tech pages have started, and they're working out really, really well. John and Muteka have been helping Allison out with a number of things. And then in October, they will, October, yeah, October, they're going to start offering tech help to patrons in the evenings and the weekends. So we're looking forward to that. And our PLA intern, Hope Funk, is staying on with us as a page in the children's department, which we're really happy about. I have resumed working on the personnel evaluation plans. I, I always feel terribly guilty when I fall behind on this, because I really want to roll it out, but it's just one of those things that gets eaten, you know, my time gets eaten up by other things, and this falls to the wayside, but I'm very hopeful to move ahead on this. And the department heads are working with me to get the documents put together.
And Karen, there's been a little thing called COVID for the past 18 months, so.
I know that.
Don't beat yourself up so much.
But there's, there's so much, you know, there's so much that needs to be done. We have reinstituted our Safety and Security Committee. We were just about ready to get started before COVID hit on looking at our security procedures manual, and do some updates, make some recommendations, that kind of thing. Then COVID hit, as you all know. And we're going to start looking at that again. I did have this committee review the workplace violence policy, which is, we have a policy in place right now. We're working on a revised draft. It had to go to the lawyer first, but I had them look at it first to give some feedback and to ask some questions. They had some good feedback and good questions, and I had, I sent it up to the lawyer for his review. He sent me back his recommendation, so I'll be bringing it to the Policy Committee shortly.
Karen, there was, from Neighbor's Link, there was some sort of policy related to ICE in libraries. So maybe that could be included as well?
Um, we can look at that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We had had our attorneys, we, we do have a policy, I'm not, I think it's called Law Enforcement Inquiries Policy, which is what that would be.
Yes.
And we did, we did have that discussion with our attorney, I want to say, like, two years ago or so. And they felt that the policy that we had in place would, was, was good and would suffice in that kind of situation as well. But we can look into it again. I'll make myself a note. Okay. Terry Kepler, our account clerk, who was with us a few years ago, is back helping out in the business office, and we are very, very happy to have her. Kathy started working with Terry Friday. She came in, so she started working on some, some projects for us. Onto the long-range plan, we are chugging along. Mallory created a one-page executive summary, which I believe you received. We emailed that to you. And we are currently waiting on, not waiting on, our, our translators are diligently translating it into Spanish, both the large document and the executive summary. We don't want to release anything to the, to the public until we have both the Spanish and the English available. We're hoping that will happen sometime around October 1. In the meantime, we are working on the, the goals in the plan. We're not waiting on the, the release of the plan to do that. So we're pushing ahead with some surveys of our program participants. And we have create, we are starting to create teams of staff members to work on different parts of the plan when that's appropriate. And one of the things that we're talking about is a bigger community-wide survey that we can find out.
Karen? Karen?
Yes.
Will you be working with Michael Holmes anymore now?
I would like to. I'm not ready yet to ask the board. But I have some ideas about how I would like to work with him going forward and to get some proposals from him. So I would like to, yes, but I don't have any firm plans with him right now.
And has he ever visited the library?
Yes, he's coming. I don't have the date right in front of me. He's coming, I think, not next week, but the following week. And I can share that date with you.
Okay.
Is she with us till the end of this year or a year once she's started?
She's with us. She's with us until probably when she goes off to college. Yeah. We have, there is a regular page now, which is generally what happens. Let me just make a note to myself. Okay. We are sending a lot. We are putting together the final paperwork for the SAM grant funding. That was for the teen office spaces upstairs and the meeting spaces upstairs. And hopefully, we'll be able to get that paperwork out this week. The Foundation has been working on a few things. They are putting Little Free Libraries in various places in the community. This is a project that was started by the PTA a few years ago. And we will be putting one of the Little Free Libraries at the library, at our library itself right out front. And then they are working on potentially two other sites in Austin, as far as that goes. And I'm happy to report that the piano repair and restringing has finished. And we're hopeful and looking forward to the day when we can have concerts in the theater again on the lovely, beautiful piano.
Is there a discernible difference?
Um, it's hard for me to say, because I haven't heard it being played for so long. But James Tripaso thinks that there is, and he's much more expert than me. Bridgette says most definitely, so I'm going to go with them. I'm going to trust their judgment. But it is more, it's definitely, you can feel it as more responsive. The, the action, the problems that were happening with the action was creating a situation where it wasn't quite as responsive when you were playing it, and you could feel it. Diana and I and Dennis are working, as Dennis said, with the folks at Mary Knoll. Our goal is to use this relationship as sort of, it's, it's not really a pilot project, because we have done outreach and homebound delivery programs with our nursing homes. But we've always done it in sort of an ad hoc manner, and we've never really done it as a, you know, this, these are the best practices. These are the comprehensive services and that kind of thing. So we're trying to do it in this case, because Mary Knoll does have a good, robust leadership team there, and we think that we can really learn from them as we go through the process. So that's exciting. Summer reading finished up very nicely. I just wanted to give a big shout out to the children's department and the teen services department for a, for a summer reading program during a pandemic, pandemic. I think they did really, really well. And, and reached as many people as possible. And the different departments are starting to do more of the in-person things that they used to do, such as Debbie Fletcher is going out to Park School to do her storytimes, and Austin Children's Center to do storytimes. You know, some of the visits that we're doing in schools are in person rather than just the virtual that we were doing. So there's a lot of hope going on these days. And I'm just making sure I'm not leaving anything else that's really super important. There are two, it's going to be a little strange. There are two Chromebook lending programs that will be going on here at the library. One is through WLS, funded by WLS, but the borrowing will happen at the library. And then the other program, once we get our ECF funding, will be library purchase devices. But we're hopeful that all of these Chromebooks that are coming our way and going out to our community will be really helpful to people in the future going forward. The Chromebooks that we are currently lending right now are mostly for in-house use, for use throughout the building. Are there any questions about anything in my report?
Erin, will you be collecting any kind of data on the, the lending of those Chromebooks to figure out, you know, how many people in the community do have, really do have access to a computer, how many do not?
Yes, for the Chromebooks that we're borrow, or that we're purchasing through the federal funds, we have to have peoples, we have to have folks certify that they don't have, that they don't have some other means of accessing this, this kind of technology. And we'll be keeping those records. For the WLS program, I would have to speak to the folks who are managing that program at WLS. Any other questions?
One, one thought, just in terms of the, you know, the, the
Is, one, one, one thought, just as terms of the uh, you know, the, the internet. Are, part of that is internet, not only devices, but obviously the internet uh, access. Is that, is that something that uh, uh, you, you, you're dealing with also? Cause I know, uh, you know, Pat, Pat certainly working on that, Pat Brigham at uh, at WLS is working on that also. And they have some programs that you, that might be helpful.
Yes, that's, that's part of both projects, both the WLS Chromebook lending project and the, the libraries um, include a hotspot for people who need them.
Okay, great, great.
Any other questions?
Karen, I'd like to just make some observations and maybe questions on the um, the budget versus actuals, that's the uh, the green pages. Um, maybe you may know off the top of your head, it's not that much of a detail, but for instance, on uh, under expenses, number 10 wages. The part-time clerical expenses are way down, is that because the hours have changed? Do we have fewer part-time employees?
So if you're looking at the um, the budget versus actual for last fiscal year. Um, we, we did have many fewer part-time hours during, while we were closed and during the pandemic. And that was mostly attrition. Um, and, and we, you know, we didn't need as many part-time hours um, on site. And people were also leaving and giving up hours, so the two of those things combined ended up with a um. A, a much lower actual than what we budgeted for.
Okay. And then on uh, page three, the HVAC expenses on year-to-date are higher. Um, I imagine that's because of the pumps and the other major repairs, um, replacement parts and uh. Unforeseen breakdown of the, of the equipment.
Yes, as you remember, last year was quite exciting when it came to our HVAC system. And we had to make numerous uh, high-cost repairs for that.
And then if you drop down to utilities, number thirty-four, it's uh, electric expenses are way down. Um, negative forty-three thousand year-to-date actual versus budget.
Yes, we had two things going on there. Um, Bob had, we think Bob, well, Bob said that he over-budgeted a little more than he should have last year for electric. And in addition to that, our building was shut down for so many months and there were just a few people here in the building. So those two things combined caused that.
Okay, great, I thank you. And um, the next item is on the agenda is payroll approvals, which I don't remember doing since this COVID started. Is that something that we can, I can come in or other trustees can come in and do, look at the payroll? So we can, I, I just feel that we're not adequately looking at that documentation, so.
Yes, you can come in and look at the payroll, though Kathy's raising up her hand, go ahead Kathy.
I need to know, I, I have a lot of, all of those payroll reports that Bob's done, I've got, I need to get all the payroll registers. Out of the file and attached to each one, so. You've got to forewarn me on this.
Right, so I would make.
Ones, can they come in to do the current ones?
Um, the current ones, we started up again, but I, for the year, I'd have to go back and, and pull out all the payroll registers.
So maybe we can set up a process by which trustees can come in and review the current payrolls at the very least?
Yeah, if we could set up a schedule going forward, I don't think it's anything that has to be done tomorrow morning.
Right.
You know, if we set it up over time, I think that'll give us a chance to catch up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Before we leave this part of the agenda, I want to go back to the um, the information at the end of the um. Financial report that Karen has. Um, when is the greater explanation?
Uh, goes into greater explaining.
Oh, is this Bob, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, I, I went through that, I thought it was really interesting, the last paragraph. Where basically he explains um, that the building costs are offset, the increased building costs that we experienced. Basically being offset by the utility bill. The lower electric, which you mentioned that, and less WLS expenses. But it bothers me that also reading through the director's report, there were, there were a few times. When people said, you know, we were really short-staffed, we've been, you know, helping one another out. So we're sort of covering one expense at the cost of another, you know.
Well.
First to now, so it's like, I want to keep that in mind while we look at the budget moving forward.
We're not short, but we're not short-staffed because we're trying to save money.
Right.
We're short-staffed because we have vacancies that we're trying to fill.
It's a coincidence.
It's a coincidence, exactly.
Yes.
And it's, and I'm very, I'm very pleased that um, all of our giant HVAC expenses came in a year when we did save a lot of money. That was very fortunate.
It was fortunate, but you can't always count on it being fortunate moving forward.
No.
So I just want to just hold that in your memory as we go forward. That's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So if there are no other questions for Karen, we can perhaps move on to committee reports. Uh, first one is the president's report. I have visited library numerous times in the last month and I always enjoy talking to department heads and any of the librarians. Uh, Suzie and Ignira have um, tried to coordinate with the schools to have more of a presence back to school night. Um, when I speak to Dan Levin, Lennon, I'm sorry, it's uh, she's a ball of energy and she's, her personality is so enthusiastic. It's a, a real breath of fresh air, she's always excited to give me an update on all the changes and anticipated changes that'll be made in the department. And the library is um, it looks a little funny, the, many bookshelves are gone, the computers uh, are almost. It, we have maybe six computers in a space that had, what, fifteen? Um, the emptiness is very telling and I hope that um, we can get back to normal. I just don't remember ever hearing a lot of a library that didn't want people to browse. So that's what we're up against and hopefully that'll change soon. Um, we can move on to the next committee if there are no questions or comments. The policy and bylaws and personnel, and we do have a resolution regarding the revised circulation policy. I believe that was read for the first time at the last meeting, Amanda?
Yes, and I want to add that it wasn't that long ago that we revised this policy. Yeah, but we saw a need to really address the part of the policy, which is materials lending schedule. We realized that um, the wonder books lying in there needed to be deleted and also the hotspots. So um, so that's why you're being presented with this policy again. And I guess there is more work for us ahead, but that is good for this month. And I don't know if this is the time to suggest it, maybe in the next couple of weeks we could meet again. Um, Shandy, can I give you a call and see which afternoon, uh, cause you need after five, right? So if I can contact you, just I'll just give you a call and see when you're available after five and then send it up with everybody else?
Sure.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything that the finance committee would like to bring to our attention or address at this time?
No, not tonight, I will uh, call a meeting, but um, I'll do that offline.
And buildings and grounds, any updates?
Can I ask Molly to take that one?
Yeah, no problem. Um, so the two big things continue to be the retaining wall and HVAC. Um, John Tortoso can speak more to the HVAC issues and um, how that's going. In terms of the retaining wall, I've reached out to two surveyors that were um, recommended to us. One is Langin, the other is Manhattan Surveying. Um, trying to get proposals from them to have them come in and do the monitoring that was being done previously by um. I'm just going to call them the other company. Um, hopefully we're going to get numbers uh, that. We'll get base numbers that are useful to um, the engineers and then a monitoring um. Package going forward. Uh, I have been talking to Brian and Gloriana about at least opening up part of the parking lot. Um, where the dumpsters are so that um, we don't have to put our trash on the curb. Um, but they're being, they want to be very careful. Um, and I understand that, um, they're doing their due diligence and want to be cautious. Um, in terms of other things going on in the building, uh, because we're um, close to starting the painting and the theater. Um, we've returned all of the seating, uh, Matt, that will make the library look fuller. Um, uh, so um, a, a lot of things that were stored in the um, Boudard's Theater have been moved out. Uh, Jimmy actually had a virtual conference in the theater. Um. Uh, and other than that, we just um, we just keep working on every little corner in that building.
Can I just ask a question with regard to the wall?
Yes.
That, the thing is, it, it's a challenge to monitor because. We have a facade and we have a wall. Right? So there's a distinction there that.
And that's, that's why we have, we do the surveys to look at movement of that facade. And that that potentially represents movement of the earth and the wall behind it. And then we have engineers who analyze that movement and make some decisions based on what they're seeing. Is it, you know, is it something that we would expect from a setup like that? Or is it out of the realm that is um, an accepted tolerance? Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is um, right now we're collecting a lot of um. Feedback from our landscaping crew about some additional work that needs to be done on the wall that separates us from the restaurant. Our own parking lot surface, um, several places where um, concrete on the sidewalk is just aging and deteriorating. Um, and also some failing plantings, uh, so. A lot going on outside of our building.
Thank you for taking this on, Molly.
And I was wondering, at this point, Molly, are we waiting or do we need to do something regarding? An engineer, a consulting engineer for the HVAC and continuing the project of replacing the air conditioning or improving it or expanding it?
I think we're going to talk more about that at the um, Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. Um, so we can, we can share more detail then.
That's where Ed Braddock will be attending?
Yes.
Good.
And we should be finished with the boiler and that whole um, piece and getting ready to move on to the next piece.
When I joined the library, so many years ago, I thought, because my experience as a homeowner was. You want to put in a furnace, you get two or three bids, you give a guy the okay, you give him a small check, it's in, two weeks later. It's nine years. I, I just, I don't think, I, I don't know if I would have had the enthusiasm I had if I knew that. I would have spread it out over nine years instead of being enthusiastic the first year and then slogging through this, through all these years. But I thank you for your efforts, Karen, thank you too.
Of course.
We go from the wall to the foundation. Any updates on?
Good, Matt, good. Um, I, I've already given you the updates that I have, Matt.
Okay, very good. So we can move on to resolutions, the first resolution number twenty-two, as referenced to Jonathan and Karen earlier. Regards the approval of the WLS Information Technology Service Level Agreement of two thousand twenty-two, also known as the SLA. The resolution reads, resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the two thousand twenty-two WLS Information Technology Service Agreement. Um, was there an amount that we need to put in the resolution itself? I lost track whether there was a specific amount.
On the back, let's see, uh, page twelve of the SLA. Um, indicates that the library cost is forty-five thousand, one hundred forty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, so I'm going to ask everyone's um, consideration in considering approving. This uh, resolution with the addition of the amount of forty-four, forty-five thousand, one hundred forty dollars, sixty-four cents. Are there any questions or comments on resolution twenty-two? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to accept resolution twenty-two in a second so we can vote. Do I have, I have Cecilia, I have Alice, all those in favor of resolution twenty-two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections, there being none, it carries six zero. We'll move on to resolution twenty-three, the approval of the revised circulation policy. Resolved, it reads, that the Board of Trustees approves the revised circulation policy. Were there any questions or comments regarding this policy? Or if you haven't had a chance to read it, any questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion in a second to pass resolution twenty-three. Thank you, Alice, and thank you, um, Alfima. All those in favor of resolution twenty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any abstentions or objections, there being none, it carries six zero. Resolution twenty-four reads approval of industrial appraisal company fixed asset and insurance valuation proposal. But Karen, it's not insurance, is it? It was audit.
It's, it's for, is that the title of the um, document, Kathy?
It, that's the title of the document, but um, it's for both insurance but also for audit valuation, for the GASB compliant audit.
All right, so the resolution then reads, resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the industrial appraisal company fixed asset and insurance valuation proposal. Dated August eighteen, twenty twenty-one, with the amount of two thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Are there any comments or questions on the resolution? Uh, there being, uh, entertain a motion for resolution twenty-four to be accepted. Thank you, Cecilia and Amanda, all those in favor of resolution twenty-four, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any abstentions or objections, there being none, it carries six zero. Move on to resolution twenty-five, the approval of the Milburn Flooring Proposal for the first floor carpeting. We haven't discussed that in detail, but resolved, it reads. That the Board of Trustees approves the July thirteen, twenty twenty-one proposal for Milburn Flooring for the installation of carpeting. In the first floor achiever room and computer room in the amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars, twenty-five cents. Um, Molly, are there cameras, anything that we needed to share with the trustees before we asked them to vote and accept this?
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to talk about that. I did bring this to the building committee in um, July. And we um, discussed it, looked at some pictures. The carpeting in the um, computer lab gets some of the heaviest use in the building. Um, we've, it is actually um, coming up off the floor, we've re-glued it and replaced tiles multiple times. But now we really need to have it stripped all the way down and the um, original adhesive removed. Um, and the full carpeting replaced. The carpeting in the achiever room is a um. It's a thinner carpet tile, it's also a dark solid, so it shows every single problem. And it also um, has a tendency to pull up when we're steam cleaning, the tile, individual tiles pull up when we're steam cleaning. So it's um, it's not very useful or efficient and the, the package to um. Replace um, both areas was favorable. Also, the way the carpet tile in the achiever room is inset with the large tables and the electrical coming through the legs. There's actually an electrical component to removing all of that, replacing the car, tearing up the old carpet, replacing the carpet. So it's kind of a big job. Um, uh, sort of a behind the scenes, probably too much information. About two weeks ago, somebody was sick on the carpet in the achiever room. It was um, really something to try and get the mark off the carpet. Um, and like I said, once we start doing deep cleaning, those tiles have a tendency to start to pull up, so um, I'll be glad to see them gone.
So given that um, detailed explanation, are there any additional questions or comments for resolution twenty-five? So given that detailed explanation, are there any additional questions or comments for resolution twenty-five? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second so we can vote on that resolution. Thank you, Amanda and Alice. All those in favor of resolution twenty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? There being none, it carries six zero. Oh, you know, give me, Molly, I don't know if you mentioned it, but the new cover of that bench in the, that's achiever room, right?
Yes.
That's gorgeous. And it's so comfortable.
Yeah.
The same material as the chairs that you've done in the past.
Yes. Yes, so we can wipe it with bleach if we have to. And it'll still look great.
Excellent, excellent. And we move on to resolution twenty-six, personnel changes. You can take a look at the various changes and I'll ask Karen if there are any comments or explanations beyond what is indicated that we should know about.
Our pages who are resigning are all doing so for the excellent reasons that they're going to college. And, and I told you about Terry coming back, which we're all looking forward to having her.
Terrific. So if there are no additional questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to accept resolution twenty-six in a second so we can vote. And thank you, Cecilia, and thank you, Alice. All those in favor of resolution twenty-six, the personnel changes, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Are there any abstentions or objections? There being none, it carries six zero. We move on to the exciting topic of old business. Before we get into the long-range plan, there were two things from our last meeting. I don't know if we needed to do any follow-up or perhaps Karen, if I could impose upon you. One question was regarding a section in the library regarding local history and perhaps working with the Historical Society or not. Is there any update or do we need to do anything regarding that?
I don't have any update for that for you right now.
All right. And the second thing from last.
Matt, I wanted to talk about that a little bit further in terms of why I think that the library should do, should get materials from the Austin Historical Society that they previously sent over to the Historical Society. And I almost proposed if I mentioned the reason that it is not accessible to everyone in the community in the same way that the library is. And so just to give you an example, you know, the library has a set of yearbooks, but they don't have all of the years. Whereas there's, the filling years are available at the Historical Society. And I believe that set, that set was sent over, an example of something that was sent over. Also, Dr. Ochsner did an oral history project many years ago through the library and expected that history project to be available at the public library for everyone to use. And also there are some sets of directories that are currently there that would also be very helpful in looking into local history.
Got you. Okay, the second item from last month was also the need to improve adult services and resources, such as resume work. And there were resources at WLS. Do we need to do anything more? Is there any update perhaps on that?
I don't have an update for you right now, off the top of my head. I can tell you that we, we have been availing ourselves of the resources that WLS offers.
Good.
I think also reading in the court that there were two librarians who attended the lecture. Like it had bearing on this and I really found the benefit.
Yes, absolutely.
They learned quite a lot that they hadn't been aware of before.
Yes, yes.
So I think that's good.
Yeah, it is good.
So in old business, we have a long-range strategic plan. I hope everyone got to see the executive summary. And Karen, are you open to any comments or suggestions or recommendations?
I sure am, especially if it's typo that you found.
Well, I was curious about the font, the type set. Is that like the final version? It's, it's, no?
No, you can, if you, if you don't like the font, I can ask Mallory to try some other fonts if you just let me know what sections.
Well, I just said everything is such large print. It, it's, and you know, there's no logo. It's not like there's a header, like it's an official document. I don't know. I don't mean to nitpick. I usually yield to what you professionals are able to put out, but.
I think it looks very busy.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think on the back.
I agree. I think it has too many fonts.
And that, and that, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Alice.
I think in the original PowerPoint, I really liked the graphic of the pillars, right? And so I'm wondering maybe if that could be added and then the font reduced on some of these other things. Because I just like that visual graphic of the pillars, you know, of the library. Because it's, but it just doesn't translate the same way.
I can talk to Mallory about making those changes.
Okay.
Was there any other business, new or old, or any topics we haven't missed or any comments or suggestions? Okay, we do have new business, which I'm actually going to reserve and move to executive session. I think it would be more appropriate to discuss the vacancy on the trustees board in executive. So Karen, were there any other topics, part of the public meeting or any other subjects that we needed to bring up?
I don't believe so, unless I'm missing something.
Okay. And at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to our visitors. Jonathan, was there anything that you'd like to add? Any comments?
Nope, I'll just say I think the, certainly the long-range plan is, for the executive summary is thorough. And I think that's, that's an exciting document and premise. I think, I think your, I think your comment was, Michael, you know, was it Michael said? And I think that was, that was, that was good. But, so I think they got, I think they got certainly the, the message of that you were trying to put forward for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I think that's important and it looks good. And I will say good night and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good night, Dennis.
Dennis, was there anything you wanted to add or any other?
The only thing I guess to Jonathan to compare or to get ideas, are there any other libraries that have Friends committees?
Yes.
Okay.
Many, many of the, most of them do. I mean, I should say many of them do. And in various things, I think you have both the Friends and the Foundation. I think that's, I don't know, that's, that's an interesting question. I can look and see if there's, do a little research and see if there's actually a list. And maybe that list would be helpful to you if you wanted to contact any of the leaders, let's say the presidents or the friends of various, of any of the other libraries in the county that have them. So I'll, I'll, I'll work on that for you.
Okay, thank you. And everyone, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, Dennis.
Take care.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to end a regular meeting and a second to go in executive session. And I have Shanti and we have Amanda. And Karen, we could stop recording. And is Kathy still here? I want to thank her for joining us.
She's still here.
I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. We'll follow to the end of any more covarians or delpes or Covid's. And hopefully we'll be able to meet together. And everyone should stay well. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to end the regularly scheduled meeting in a second so we can vote on it. Thank you, Amanda and Cecilia and Shanti. And if there's a favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes six zero. Everyone stay well. And hopefully we'll see you all soon.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, everybody.
Good night.